We're now live on Channel 8 YouTube.
Excellent, thank you very much. I'll call this meeting to order at 6:30 PM. So with the Pledge of Allegiance. Yeah, does the board have a chance to review the minutes?
Yes.
I would enjoy motion to approve the minutes of time motion during the second. Discussion on motion. You know, on favor of approving minutes?
Hi.
Minutes have been approved, thank you very much. Okay, moving on to. By the way, welcome everybody. So we'll give everyone a chance to speak at some point and, you know, any concerns and issues and questions. So at this point, is the board have a chance to review?
So I guess. So I'll just keep my opinion off the top and see where we go. So I've read all these documents and it looks back in 2005 that this was sent from the board at the time to the Selectman's Office with the recommendation to accept the town. They have, they had the road accepted by the town at town meeting. I don't see anything in anything I've read that would prevent me from making that same decision today. I don't see anything. So I guess if it was up to me today, I would send this to the town. But I'm one person.
Any other thoughts from the board? We can listen to them first and I was just, I was opening up to the board first to see what anybody.
There's a, I'm not against it, but for everybody, mayor, your protection. No, no, we're just a board. The biggest issue I can see there is, and that was an issue 25 years ago too, because I may be the only one that went on a board and I'm still here, but. The contractor ran away, we had no money. So number one, let's go after him. So we went to the selectmen, which you can't blame none of them now because there's no selectmen here now from back then. We have to selectmen say, go after him, get the money so we finish the road. The selectman at the time says, no, we don't want to spend the money. We're not going to chase them. So that's when it really fell apart. The road was half done, no money, and the contractor left. And the town didn't want to go after. That was how it went down too. And the next thing was the biggest item out of the whole thing, what I could see is we, the board at the time and the selectman at the time says, we'll accept the road. But if we didn't have it surveyed, which we should have had it surveyed. So then surveying company surveyed the road and they found out that the road isn't where it's supposed to be. Part of the road is on the people, some, some of your lots and vice versa. So then they had a choice of whatever, how many lots it was to have those people, maybe not here now, we have those people, give that land to the town. So we can go on.
Frank, can I ask just a quick question? Where is that? Like, so where is that?
Right.
Here, yeah. So is that what that lien is right there? Okay, that's what that easement is in this packet. Is that what that was for? To fix that?
Yeah, the deed.
The deed of easement, right? That was when they did that to change the road and update.
Well, we know every subdivision before we accept it, we can have our engineer check it, make sure every risk.
Right, but is that? But is that, I'm just trying to, just for, I understand the pieces. This deed even, is that, was this produced as a result of that survey or was that?
I don't know.
Okay. Okay, I didn't mean to interrupt. I just wanted to ask that question.
No, that's my turn.
We'll get you back. We'll get you back.
We'll get you back.
Yeah. So anyways, that's where it fell apart because there wasn't many of lots and I don't even know what lots it was. But the people who were it was decided they didn't want to give their land to the town on the road. So that ended it right there because the town can't have a road on private property because then you could build a house or shed on a road because that road would be your land. So consequently, it would have, some people were scared that it would take the land away. It would make their law an unconforming law, which they didn't want. So that's how it fell apart. So even right now, until we have, we got to know where a road is. We, we have to because you can't have a road on private property. That's like having a driveway because now the guy who ever owns the land could tell you, you can't drive on my property. I mean, the legal part of it, I'm not a lawyer, but so until you get that road surveyed and we could bend. The right of way is 50 feet wide. The road may be 24. I mean, it was into right of way or something, but you can't have the property in that road itself. For that reason, because whoever owns the property is going to be liable for me driving on that. It makes a lot of.
So, but I'm still confused. Like, I don't see. So this is just, again, not being here, right? So I'm looking at the, just at the documentation that's here. I don't see.
Okay, well, we don't have finished. Overlay.
So.
Well, we have the as-built.
Well, yeah, but didn't he build it good enough? Or is the overlay different from this? It was never done.
But isn't the as-built, shouldn't that be the most, that's actually what is here? Right. And that's what we have.
It should be up there. I don't, we never went that far. That is maybe what the contractor had, build the road. Is it built, is this here, here? Was it over here?
Right.
You don't know unless you have it.
Surveyed.
Surveyed.
It was surveyed, yeah.
Give us the plan.
Do we have, is there an updated?
I got the plan from you folks.
That might be that.
That's why.
I'm just telling you what I know. I'm not against it, but if you don't do it right.
Excuse me, my name's Colleen Faye. I'm from 111 Law View. All this was approved by the town, the planning board, which you were, you were on. That is correct. As the as-built plans, and Sarah Conrad Denell run law, the planning board asked him to sign over the road, rock and barrel to the planning board. And a legal document was signed by all those involved. It was signed, it was done up by town council. And it was signed by the Templeton Planning Board and Conrad Denell about him giving up all rights to the road. Built the specification as the built, as built plans have been approved by the planning board. And it, back in January 28, 2004, this signed document by Conrad and the planning board members at that time said to move to the town meeting warrant. Then they had to see some questions about some, an engineering plan. It was a fence that needed to be a little bit longer, the engineer wrote. And right now there's trees all after, I don't know, 18 years we're on here. It's, yeah, it's, it's all grown in, so I don't think that's an issue. And then there was another issue between the Hertz and the Fords, and I just know their addresses is 107 and 103. And actually, there's a house there now. The Fords have built a house there, so 218. So I think the engineering plan over the last of time is no longer valid. One of the, I came, we have come to you today to waive the conditions of acceptance to move forward to town meeting. And Mr. Machete said, well, the road has been built wrong, but I have all this documentation that everything was approved in 2005. I have all the signed documentation. You probably have the same documentation that I have. So I, it's time for us to move forward and we can't do that by looking in the rearview. The road has been there for over 20 years. It's, it's time to have the town voters vote on it. Whether it's built on people's property, the survey was done in 2005. Is that correct, Lori? The survey.
2005 was the last one.
Was the survey that was done and completed and that's, and somehow something just fell through. So what's in this way?
Again, for me, I still don't see any documentation. So I, I'm not suggesting what may or may not have happened because I have no idea. I wasn't clear, right? I don't see anything here that says that the as-built plan isn't, which is what we typically use. Is the as-built plan.
Why was this road accepted?
And that's why.
I don't see why. I don't see why. No, I know, but I don't see why. All I see is that the board.
I mean, there's, there's 10 other things wrong with that. Don't, you shouldn't accept it. But I'm not going there.
I understand that, but I'm trying to understand that. I see several pieces of documentation that says the board, this board, as well as the selectman wanted to send this to town. Did it ever go to town for it?
No. No.
And why, but I know you're saying like, why?
Why it didn't go to town for? We, I was one alone. We signed, accept the road, selectmen assigned it. Then an engineer went out there and he found the problem. That, but I don't, he never gave us nothing. I think really he wasn't paid, so he said, I'm not going back. So what he did then, he walked away. So now, when he says the road wasn't like we're supposed to be. I think it was five lots, one lot or 20 lots, but because he never gave us nothing because he didn't want to work, good work for us. Didn't work for us. So that's why he wouldn't go back. So we didn't get the as-built. That's where, until you get that, not us, we're protected.
This is the, the as-built is, that's hearing and speculation. I can't, there isn't any documentation for that, what you're saying, Frank. I'm sorry. It's, it's theory and conjecture. It doesn't make any sense. There's no written documentation. And what we are presenting to you, my friends on the board, is documentation that this should have been done a long time ago. Frank, I know you don't like the area and.
I have no.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Okay, I'm sorry to speed it up. I'm running the meeting. Nope, I'm just, no, we're just trying to get some information.
Yes, we're going to understand.
That's what we're doing.
Can I make an observation? I'm absolutely brand new and I don't, I don't have any viewpoint in one direction or another, but the fact that there is now documentation that seems to be clear one way or another, the town's issue could potentially be the, the lack of a proper survey. So let's say we all approve this. It goes to town. We approve the road to be a town maintained road and later on it's discovered that that town road is on somebody's property. That's a legal issue for the town of Templeton. It's not that we don't want to be able to give you guys what you need. We're just trying to be diligent and we have to go back to see what happened back then to determine if we can move forward. And that absence of information is a sticking point. It is a sticking point for us.
If you have, I'm Lori Matson, 73 Law View. Do you have the planning board minutes of February 7th of 06 in your packet?
I do not.
So.
Lori, do you know if we have minutes from?
Oh, I'm sure we have minutes.
You're welcome to read them.
Yes.
So, so I just, in this, in these minutes, it says Ed Bouchet comes to the board with plans for Laurelview project. He produces the easements that need to be signed by the landowners. He shows the board where the easements were needed, lots one and 17, which I don't know which ones shows are. Are the lots still owned by Conrad? He feels that the plan is the one that needs to be recorded. Is it Laurelview Road or Laurelview Drive, which we always have a question on that. Number 17 is labeled non-buildable, which I'm very curious.
Number 17 is the forest house.
That's what I thought. He submits the description of the road, quotations, to the planning board for road acceptance. All signatures need to be notarized at the time of signing. Mr. Boucher will send the document to the board email. A meeting is suggested in or stored in newspaper. Let's skip that here. And then a prepared statement would be the best and a letter to the landowners. Cindy and Sean agreed to write the letter. It is the consensus that this will not get on the May warrant, may, may be the fall special town meeting. At the end of this. Sorry. Another set of meeting minutes from April 2006, April 27. At the very end, they, it says, it only brings up that they talk about Laurelview is discussed with no further resolution on how to proceed. And then it says, this secretary brings up the question posed several weeks ago, referring to legal's definition of reasonable conditions. It was decided that we can go further with this issue after town meeting. We should ask, what are the conditions we can impose that will stand the test of a lawsuit? It was suggested that policies needed to be established to clarify the regulations and that would be a good job for a planner. So I'm assuming that somebody knew that there was something wrong in this situation and that you could be sued. So now you're looking for something, that board is looking for conditions to impose that would stand lawsuit after speaking about Laurelview. Which I found interesting.
So do we have any idea why the deed of easement was not signed by those residents?
I don't even remember anybody. We've been there since 2000.
It was in 93 and no one's, we were the second house. No one's ever.
That's just.
Yeah, but there is a, there is a document back here from an attorney. One of the questions that they had was with regard to getting title examinations done for all of the lots that abut the road to determine whether or not there's an incursion of that road in anybody's property. And if that's not done and it's not secured, again, and I'm not an attorney by any stretch, my concern would be, we accept the road and then later on, somebody gets into a situation and we find ourselves as a town with a town road on private property.
That's my whole issue.
And that, and, and I'm not certain the best way through that, other than based on this recommendation back on March 10th of 2005 from an attorney that was asked to be involved in this. They said that we need title exam, in order to do a title examination, we'll need deed or deed references for all the individual lot owners and the developer. If that hasn't been done to determine whether or not we've got that situation, where are the stalemate? We can't approve a road on your property. We just can't.
So we can't, it's going to be difficult if, if at all possible to go back and figure out what really happened. Are we talking about the section of road from Hubbardston Road out to where it's, that's just that one section?
Well, we don't, we don't know.
We have to do the whole loop. Okay.
Yeah.
Well, that makes it a little more complicated, but I, 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 I'm not, don't have any idea how much it would cost to have that resurveyed and determine whether or not there is any infractions as far as the property lines are concerned. And start the proceed, procedure over again and do it correctly.
Can the board spend the town's money?
Well, we can't do it, but we'd have to get the selection to approve doing.
I was going to say, yeah.
I, I think our, our job here might be to turn it back to the selectmen and have them.
So why doesn't the as-built work? What?
I don't think we've determined that yet. We're still testing.
Because I know that was surveyed by Ed Bouchet.
Yeah, that's been surveyed in 2005.
The road's not going to lose change. Right. So that survey is not necessarily wrong, am I right?
Right.
Well, that's a question.
We're according to the as-built. They're telling us, this is as it was built. This is where it is. I don't, still don't see anything.
And you, you do have the parents in room two, if you have questions.
Yes, sir.
Steve Vanville, 58, Law View. Are we talking about easements or encroachments? What is the problem with, with the property? That's, you know, really, this is what we're talking about. Private property, public property, where he cut in. It's easements or encroachments. There are, there are legal documents for being able to, to approach and, and legalize all of what was there. And something has, so exactly what are we talking about?
Well, that's what we're trying to determine. So again, I mean, this is stuff that obviously has been going on for years. This is new to most of the board members right here. So yeah, I apologize, but it is going to take some time to, to work through and figure things out. So we're, and we're doing that.
We're talking about private property, so that would be encroachments. And, and, and who exactly is that private property owner? Nobody knows. I mean, Frank doesn't know.
That's what we're looking to determine right now.
Right, too. I want to say one thing. I'm not against you with us. I'm not. Trying to help you, just in the long picture, because someday it's going to buy you some money.
Hey, guys, hey, everybody.
See, I'm not against you. I'm trying to help you, but I get the feeling that I'm adverse. I'm not. Because somebody someday is going to be in a real bad financial situation when somebody tells you where you can't, when somebody goes builds, I can build there, it's my property. It's not the wrong. The town cannot put a dime or do any work on private property and it would be private property. And then the person that owns that is going to make a decision that they want to forfeit it because then you're going to unconform the law. But we don't even know that.
Can I ask, so we have, our attorney's on, right?
I'm sorry.
Our attorney's on the phone. John, is there any reason for us to go beyond the, the as-built plan as being what's actually built?
Is that directed at me?
So we have an as-built plan.
Yeah.
It's as-built. Why would, I'm asking the question, why would I look any further? I'm just trying to.
So I think here's the issue that we're facing here. So when we get an as-built plan, and by the way, my name's Tom Harrington, Town Council. Pleased to meet you all. With me is my associate, Ryan Holquist. But when we get a, we get a subdivision plan, we approve a subdivision plan. When we get the as-built, ideally, when we lay that as-built on top of the subdivision plan, it should match exactly. Right? In this case, I believe it does not match exactly. So here's what likely has happened. So that when the lot owners bought their lots, those lots were described based on the subdivision plan. Right? So it's, you know, so, you know, Jane and, Jane and Tom Smith were conveyed lot 17 as that lot is shown on the subdivision plan of record. Once we get the as-built, we see that the road was actually constructed a little bit on lot 17. How much I don't know, but i- if they don't line up exactly, the, the roadway was not constructed in the right place. It now encroaches on their land. So, so their lot size may not be as big or, or better yet, conforming as it was on the plan. So that's, right? So that's the first issue that we need to figure out. And if that is the case, then when we acquire that land, you know, typically, again, if they lined up perfectly, we could go to the developer who did not convey the, you know, if we think of the road as its own lot, he didn't convey that roadway to anyway, to anyone, so he can convey that to the town. But now we need the conveyance to include kind of whatever the roadway is, but also corrections along the way because the actual roadway is likely on some of the lots as shown on the subdivision plan. So that's. Yeah.
Could. Which one, I wanted to hear, let the.
So, so it could just be feet? I mean, like, I'm just curious, is it, is it, I'm just trying to understand, is it exact, is it an exact science or is there inches involved? I'm just trying to understand like how far off this could be and what are the legal ramifications? You know?
With that, yeah. So an engineer could tell us whether it is an inch off or 10 feet off. I, I can't tell you that, but an engineer could tell us that, you know, and presumably whoever, whatever engineer created the subdivision plan also created the as-built plan. So he should be able to do the overlay for us.
Yeah, what would the legal verification be if the road is, say, 10 feet further over onto someone's property line versus where we actually think it is?
So from our perspective, right? So we need to acquire it and we're either going to acquire it by deed or by eminent domain. If we're going to acquire it by eminent domain, which means we're going to take it, which in some ways is easier because when a town uses its eminent domain authority, it cleans the title. So we don't have to worry about, you know, kind of all these inaccuracies. However, it does open us up to damages so that if we're acquiring land that's owned by Tom and Mary Smith at lot 17, we're going to have to reimburse them for the acquisition of whatever part of their lot we take unless they waive it. So it's, so, so I think you guys are on the right track. What we need to do, that the, the as-built plan might be sufficient, but we need someone to tell us first that the as-built plan is accurate. Because typically a planning board, when they receive an as-built plan, they have a consulting engineer to at least check it. We need to confirm that that's accurate. And if it is accurate, then we need to know how much it is different than the underlying subdivision plan. And once we, then we need to make sure we understand the title so that we know who's, who needs to give us what and then we can acquire it. But there's, there are a number of steps and to me, the first step is we might not need a new plan, but we do need someone to tell us that the as-built plan, as you know, that we have is accurate as to what's out there today. And then we need to know how it differs from the underlying subdivision.
Perfect.
Yes. Colleen Faye, 111. How do we know, like, when the planning board accepts as-built plans and signs off on it, what makes someone think that it's not built right?
We have peer engineers.
All right. So we had, we already had that done.
No, I don't believe so.
That's, that's, that's not what's showing up is that that was done.
Because it was done, we should have a report from.
Right.
You're right. So, you know, this can be.
And that's what we're missing, which is why we keep going back to, we don't have an assurance that the road is in the right place. And if we move ahead without getting that assurance, there are going to be problems further down the road.
Say ABC land survey and then we have XYZ to make sure that it's accurate. So that there's, it's not just, we don't accept whatever's passed into us.
There's no evidence of peer review on this.
Never had. What he was talking, they call overlay. In other words, this is a plan and they resurvey it, they overlay it over this and they're supposed to. But I, I'm, whatever he says, saved me a lot of talking. But anyways, I think you have to have a survey. There's no, as you.
No, it has to, we have to have a peer engineer.
So.
Review the, the original in the as-built to see if there's a difference.
All right.
If it's determined, if it's determined there's a difference, then we would have to go through the steps that the attorney outlined.
Okay, so my second part of this was in 2018, we were told. Okay, so my second part of this was in two thousand eighteen, we were told, Town Templeton isn't going to plow our road anymore. And we were told, we own to the middle of the road, each one of us, the property goes right up into the middle, we own up to the middle of the road. So. But that's what we were told. Conrad told us, Tom, I think you were the lawyer there that night, that told us that we own to the middle of the road. My property goes out to the middle of the road.
No.
Right? Isn't there, so when now?
The town don't own it, so somebody's going to.
So somebody owns it, so I own it now, right? So already we're off on property. If I own to the middle of the road. And so is the easement on any subdivision? Why wouldn't that be into play? Like, why?
There's not, there's not, but I'll let Tom want to answer.
Yes.
So, yeah, so you have, you, you have your deed, right? When you purchased your house, you got a deed, your deed. I strongly suspect that the description of your lot ends at the side of the roadway as shown on the subdivision plan, that your lot is described as lot, you know, fill in the number as shown on a subdivision plan. Okay, so the, the, the part about owning to the middle of the road, right? So everyone who lives out, um, on Laurelview has an easement, cross-easements, right? You all get to, you all get to drive and, you know, FedEx gets to come to your house and everyone gets to come to your house. And, you know, you don't get to block to the middle of the road because your neighbors have easements across that road. But wha- what I'm saying is there's a thing called the derelict fee statute, and we're really getting into the weeds here. But the derelict fee statute says that when a road is private, if we can't identify the owner of the road, then the abutters to that road own to the center of the road. It doesn't mean that people still can't drive over it, just means that you own to the center of the road. Because someone has to own it.
If this is a private road, they own to the center of the road. If it's a town road, the town owns. Oh, twenty-five.
Yeah, because the town owns the road.
Right.
Town owns the road, right. With a town road, the town owns the road, correct.
Right, and it's twenty-five feet from the center of the road.
Different, yeah, depending on the width, but typically, yeah, fifty feet right away.
Somebody's property is beyond the road, across the road, or?
All it's saying is that the as-built plan and the, and the original design aren't matching, and they have to match. We have to verify that they match, and if they match, this is kind of a moot point, we can just move on. But we have to find out if they match, like, there has to be.
But why do we have to find out and not anybody else?
I didn't, I, we haven't determined who's going to find out that.
You know, like, when other people, developments, turn their road over to the town, do they have to do all this?
And who said, who said it doesn't match?
And who said, who is saying it doesn't match? There's nothing here.
But we don't, we don't know, so like.
Because in, in the normal circumstance, the way this all plays out is we have our peer, you know, the, um, developer turns in plans. We then have somebody review those plans to ensure that it does line up, everything matches, everything's done, uh, you know, so that we're not in these situations. Sadly, this is just over the past, um, two years, this was not done properly. So we're now here to make sure this is done properly, bring everything up to code, make sure things are fine so that it can be accepted.
No, but that's the part that I've come, the letter was to approve the road, waiving the conditions of approval.
Well, there's a difference between, approval is very different than built and as-built, so. Like, that road is not up to today's standards. Standard, today that road would pass, so that could, might get waived. I can't speak for everybody. But we need to make sure that the road is where it belongs. And typically that happens through peer review as part of the process prior to the road going to town for. My assumption, based upon the letters that I've read, I would have assumed that that happened, but it sounds like it didn't happen.
Well, what happened was with contractor left, that change.
No, it just sounds like, well, it sounds like that that should have happened before the board.
We're not asking here no more than any other developer.
Yeah, just, but just twenty years later. And the problem is we don't have a developer here to, we normally do this with the developer to ensure that all this is done so that the property owners aren't.
Paying the price.
Correct.
Of this problem.
Correct.
Every year now, since two thousand eighteen or seventeen, we wonder if the town is going to plow, plow our road, and we're fed up with it. We're taxpayers. The road was meant to be a town road. It was approved in two thousand five by two boards, planning board and select board.
The overlay was never done, that was.
But why am I paying the price for that? How, like, how does it go that far? And then twenty years later, we're told.
I told you.
It isn't.
Let me interrupt you for a moment. I told you why, because we went to the selectman, nobody got out. To chase the contractor, to make him finish the road, they choose not to.
No, you, you, Conrad signed the road over. I have the documents. He signed the road over, lock, stock, and barrel to the planning board.
I don't blame him.
You asked for it. You asked for it. You asked for him.
Mike Mattson, seventy-three, Laurelview. I'm just curious now, after hearing this. So if the road was never accepted, why were the lots approved, per se? Because that's the, the process, the lots are sold, and then, and the final part is the road.
It's almost like.
That's covered in the original.
I hate to say it, like, buyer beware. When you buy a house or when the road miller approve, you're taking that chance. Seller not going to tell you.
No, we bought it from somebody that bought it from.
We still have thirteen original owners living on Laurelview, thirteen families.
How many lots is there really?
There's twenty-four.
You don't know?
Thirteen.
Why should I know, sir? Sir?
So, can I ask a question? Shelley Saunders, fifty-five, Laurelview. So I understand there's a discrepancy with the plans. When I first built my house, do you think part of that discrepancy could be the sidewalks? There were no sidewalks when I built my house. Years later, I couldn't tell you if it was Conrad, I couldn't tell you if it was the town. They came over, hey, you're getting a sidewalk. Could that be the discrepancy in the land and the road part?
The thing is, there actually may not be a discrepancy. We don't know if there is or there is not, and that's the issue. We don't really know, because. There was never a comparison made between the.
We know for sure the town didn't build the sidewalk.
And the developer would have been more than happy to hand all of that work over to the town rather than to do it at the time that it should be done. And sadly, we're all stuck in the middle of it now.
Well, I mean, I think.
Because the proper process back then with.
More than anybody has stopped.
Once the road is laid out, if it's not then resurveyed to make sure, he could have put the road down anywhere. And many of you may have this road sitting on part of your property. Nobody knows the answer to that right now. That's where we're at. If that can be determined and the road lines up where it should be, then we can move it forward and make it a town road. If it's discovered that he laid the road down in the wrong places, then there are legal implications for that. We can't take over a road if it's on your property. We can't legally do that.
But what is?
Well, it sounds like, and again, I'm going to refer back to our attorney. We can, it's just a matter of the paperwork has to be done, the process of that being done, correct?
We have, you're right, we have to make sure that each and every private, you, you know, each and every landowner who's, uh, who has part of that road on their land conveys it to us. So, yeah, so we, we have to, it's, it's becomes a much more significant kind of title search process if, if things don't line up.
So who's going to have to pay for title searches and all this to move it forward? Because it sounds like it cannot be moved forward.
No, it's, it's the survey to find out where, so again, if it's, the road is five feet or ten feet on yours versus the neighbor across the street, determine, so when everything is filed, so that when the town takes ownership of that property.
Drainage.
You know, then we can say that it's, you know, we're taking five feet of yours or taking ten feet of the neighbor across the street to know exactly where that is. That's a very good question.
I see this was referred to us by the selectmen. I'm thinking we should give them a report of what we decide tonight and send it back to them. See if they want to have the town do anything about paying for it. The thing is, we don't know if it's three lots, five lots. I mean, maybe this, this isn't as big of a problem we think it is. Well, house may be off two or three feet, but it's still off on the plate. But I mean, it might not be a big of a problem as we're kind of think it is. If it's two, three lots, if they're off forty or a few feet, I think we can work with that. But we can't work with, if they're off thirty, forty feet, ten lots, I mean, we don't know. Until we figure this out, we can't do nothing.
Just makes me wonder, if people sold properties and they all came back with title, because a lot of this would have been determined. So, Tom, is that true? If people had sold property, wouldn't this have shown up in their title searches and surveys?
Well, so not necessarily, because the as-built plan is not typically recorded. And I don't, I, I don't know if this one was recorded or not. But if it's, you know, if the, if the deeds all refer to the subdivision plan, the subdivision plan is of record, no one's going to figure that out until someone, some surveyor raises it as an issue.
So deed of easement, that's just for drainage and?
That's what, yeah.
That's what it says.
This looks like it's the drainage things that would be done as a next. Those may be some of the things that as a board we can provide for adjustments on, right? But, um, again, there may be potential legal things before we even get to this.
So the survey that Ed Busha did in two thousand five is nothing?
It's the as-built plan.
He didn't work for us.
But no, it's something, it's just right here. It's the as-built plan.
He did work for the town, the town paid him.
But we, we don't, we pay him out of a.
Out of the funds.
Out of contract, find the contractor leaves behind.
So the road's built, town hires a man to do the survey.
We don't. We want to just be really clear.
Building does.
The builder does.
No, the builder didn't do this. I have the expense voucher. Where the town paid for it.
We pay for it out of the, I saw. So when, when a builder.
Conrad left no money. Yes, he did.
He did.
Like, a little bit. I don't know.
I just, yes, just. He's going to explain it. It's, it's not, it's not overly complicated. When someone comes in to build, they have to put money in escrow for us to spend on things like this, right? So, so the builder doesn't pay them directly, we pay them from the builder's money. So that's the as-built plan. We pay, we, the contractor also pays for our peer review. And it's my guess that that's where the money started to disappear, and therefore we did not have the funds for peer review, which is why this.
Enough money was never.
Yeah, that's my guess. I've. But my thought is, that's probably what happened. I still don't see anything that would prevent me.
Well.
Personally, when it comes to this as-built plan, I don't see any evidence of any, of anything else. So I don't know. But if this was paid out of the town's escrow, was this on our behalf? We wouldn't pay, um, we would not pay for an as-built plan. We would pay for peer review. I just, I just can't imagine we would pay for an as-built plan. No, I know, but I tried to say, we just. This is an as-built plan that the contractor would have.
Built, built.
Would, would do. We would not pay, we, we pay for peer review on the as-built plan. We would have an engineer, you know, pick a name that would come and say, oh, yeah, this, according to what I can see, does not match the original document that was filed as part of the subdivision.
The peer review is, is the same as an overlay?
Yeah, very similar. That peer reviewer overlays. That's how, that's how they compare. It's the checking balance to ensure that the, you know, first company did everything properly, and then it's actually. We're not engineers, right? So we, we hire an engineer to.
But we use, we use.
Provide that as the next step. Well, we typically wouldn't, the town typically wouldn't provide it. We make the developer, the developer provide the funds.
Which you have established that was may or may not ever.
I don't know. I wasn't here, so I can't speak for that. But that would be my guess how this was paid for, even though we wrote it out of an account from the town of Templeton. I'm assuming that this was paid for by the developer, because we would not pay for in genuine as-built plan. We would pay a peer review to, to review that plan. Doesn't, I don't know if that happened.
So maybe we, we request that that does happen.
I think that's what we're going to have to request, but I think we're going to have to request it. I think that's kind of where we're at. I think we have to request. And that's what's. But this board is, you know, so everybody on here is a volunteer, and there's actually only budget here for dealing stamps. So we would have to send it back to the selectmen to see who's responsible for paying for it, because this board has no. And that's what I was wondering, if we could get an, uh, idea from our peer review engineers, what they think this might actually cost for them to do that, so that we all, and we can sit here, you know, and for example, if we tune our whole thing, that would know, like, four, I know, four, it'd be twenty thousand. So if, until we know what the bill could potentially be, you know, we're sitting here saying. But I would hate to, like, continue to have these meetings and not take that next step forward if this really is a problem. Because right now, I still think, I don't see this.
Right, why are we doing it if it's not a problem? We don't know that.
Sure, we don't know, that's exactly why. So here's the thing, we're trying to, over the years, things happened because mistakes were made, and we're trying to ensure that that doesn't happen again and that everything's being done properly, so that as we move forward, everything is being done, you know, completely accurate and certainly is fine. That's the whole point of what we do here. I don't think it would take a whole lot of time. You guys have been working in this for years. I don't think it's going to take a whole lot of time. You just have to get decisions, but it's going to pay for peer review.
I think the big issue is it goes out of payment.
No, that's a big issue, but, but, sorry, I'm sorry.
The supplemental disclaimer from March two thousand five. It kind of outlines. It, it's alerted to the select board after the as-built was sent to them.
So the, the peer review, does that involve another survey of all of our properties?
No, maybe just a road.
Well, maybe not even. They might just.
We have all the documentation, somebody just needs to.
And that's, it all depends, they could look at these and say, yep, and do enough, like, you know, point checks and realize that everything's fine. Or, you know, it all depends on, and that's why I was going to try to get an idea of what the estimate of that would be, if they can just do a desk review and say, yep, this looks like it's.
But the problem is, we can't go along further. This is built.
Yeah, so here's the, actually, here's the peer review right, right here, is what you're saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, but according to this review, it's what I read from, and it says, in order to obtain a title examination, we need the deed to deed references for individual lot owners and the developer. That would have been, this, this was from that attorney that reviewed what we have here. And we're kind of arriving at the same thing, is we need to determine if the road laid out in the as-built is the same as.
Can we read the last paragraph? The last two. Me back in two thousand five, it says, I normally would recommend the town to require, require the developer to provide the necessary title information and plans, or it appears it's not possible in this case. So the developer left, so they couldn't give us the information. Worry, right? If the town is interested in perfecting the layout, the cost associated with the layout will be borne by the town. Let's discuss with town coordinator, it's not possible to accurately predict the cost because of the scope required and the work is not known until the title examination is completed to determine the amount of survey work that will be necessary. The town can't afford it, so they don't get the road. The job was having. The job was having Dragged on this many years. I'm sure, uh, but it doesn't say, see the part, I mean, the part about this, it doesn't say that anything's wrong. Like, it says that the title examination, all these things have to happen. And the town chose not to do it. It doesn't say that these things are incorrect, it doesn't say that that as-built plan, in fact, it kind of, she doesn't identify the as-built plan as being incorrect. What she says is, in order to really do the proper peer review, I need to do these things. In order to do these things, the town has to pay for it, and we said, no, thank you. And so, we, so
What if there's no problem?
Probably isn't a problem.
Survey it and everything's perfect.
Well, that's
You're all here for a lot of reasons. So really, you don't even know if you got
To provide an assurance that the
Two last surveys.
Plan that was put in place for the subdivision.
Right.
And what actually is on the ground.
Right.
Is the same.
Right, but the town agreed to that.
And as a board, we don't have the ability to waive that. We, we just don't, as a board, have the ability to waive that.
The town agreed not to do it. Because they didn't want to pay for it.
Only an attorney could answer for land law as to whether or not, if I say, yeah, the town didn't do it back in two thousand and five, I think you guys should have a road, and now legally later on, there ends up becoming some type of a land dispute because something's wrong.
So Tom, can I ask this question very specifically? If we decided on a subdivision, not to do peer review, not to do it, no thanks, don't feel like it, Charlie knows everything. Any laws against that?
No.
And we can approve anything we want?
Yeah, so yeah, I mean, to use your example, yeah, nothing prevents you from approving it or not approving it.
So, because I look at this, and what this tells me is that Deborah, Deborah, I can't see anything with glasses on, couldn't perform her job, because the person who had all the information took off, and the town would have to bear the cost, and the town decided it did not want to. That's what this says to me, and so if the town decided they didn't want peer review, this is in March, after they already sent the road to be accepted, I think three times, from the letters I saw, I I don't, I think that the people back then decided not to do peer review, why should I decide to do it? I would, again, I would let it go through to the town, let town decide. This is, I'm only one vote.
That's all one of the times, but
I'm sorry, sorry, sorry.
But what would be involved, but you're gonna realize, now say, if anyone of you happen to own land that's on the town, it causes a problem, it's gonna cause a problem if you ever want to sell your house, it's gonna cause a problem of you can stop somebody from, even the road, you can stop the traffic, so you could get in a real legal thing.
Nobody seemed to care.
Redoing the deed easement.
Well, the deed easement is just for drainage, and you know, this statutory, I mean, Tom could speak way more about this, but this statutory requirements that allow that anyways, whether they sign those documents or not. I, I don't, when I look at this, this looks like we got an as-built plan, we didn't have the money or the information to give to our peer reviewer, and they said, and the town decided not to do it. And if that's the case.
So you go ahead and approve the road, and then
Before there was any
Somebody wants to sell their house, and when they go to get clear titles to sell it, the road is on
Sold for twenty-five years. Yes, sir.
If that wasn't going to be a problem, we could have it right now, I mean, we have great Thirty years. If somebody was going to have a problem, nobody would be driving on that road.
See, I, I see this as, I, I, and again, I'm only one person, I see this as, well, we really made a big mistake back in two thousand and five. Well, you know, we can fix it, when I say we, I don't want to take full responsibility for the board, I don't mean, I wasn't here. But, you know, we know what we can do going forward, but if, if Tom is comfortable that we are not required to have peer review, none of this would have even been an issue, and this road would have been approved.
Right, I disagree.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not saying that you had to have a peer review, but when we acquire land, like a road, we need to have a specific and detailed description of the land we are acquiring. And if we do not have that, specific, detailed and accurate, if we do not have that, I cannot guarantee that, you, you, so we don't know how much it'll cost us to acquire it, because either everyone's gonna give us a deed who needs to give us a deed, and you know, we, we need to understand that from the plans, or we're gonna take it by eminent domain, and we're gonna end up paying damages to everyone whose land we take.
So is there a way where the residents of Lowerview, not anybody is here, so I don't know how any of this works, can waive
Damages.
Damages, if you will.
No, to accept
To accept, if we, if, as a condition of us accepting the road.
That's, that would be, yeah, they can do that, but I would go back to, it all starts with a detailed, accurate plan. I don't know if the as-built plan is a detailed, accurate plan. Is it, you know, so is it something we can rely on, and can we record it?
Why wouldn't it?
Do we have the lot, do we have the description of the
Hasn't been reviewed.
Well, as-built is, so as-built is reviewed, as-built just isn't reviewed by our peer, right? I mean, so as-built was done by an engineer licensed.
Right, well, I mean, even to go to a step kind of simpler, right, so we can only record Mylar plans, right? We can't record a paper copy of a plan, we need a Mylar. Do we have a Mylar of the as-built plan?
No, no.
Is this engineer still in business? And was it the same guy that designed the subdivision?
I don't know the answer to that.
If he did the as-built plans in two thousand and four, when all the houses were done and the road was done. So the road is done. The houses are built.
No, the houses don't have to be built, the road, don't we, all we're talking about We're not talking, nothing about the house lots, so
But he surveyed.
Yeah, well, I'm getting at is, the road is what we're concerned about. So, you could have a plan on the road finished, if you know houses there, then the guy could put houses in later, or half the houses could be there.
Is the description that we have attached in here, is this the actual road? The road, so this looks like to me, when I look at this, I can't, again, make the last one. Road description, lower view, so we have a detailed description of the road, Tom, right? That's as attachment one.
Yep.
Is that what we're looking for?
Well, that, so that allows us to put it in the deed, right? But then, so it comes back to, and let me just expand a little bit, it comes back to who signs the deed, right? So, the developer, whoever the developer is, likely owns the roadway, is he available to sign a deed to us, or are we going to need to take the land? Right, so that's, that's question one.
Town owns the land.
He signed
He signed it over.
But the town needs to exist, so he can give us something, but we need to accept it, and only town meeting can accept it, and if town meeting didn't accept it, we don't own it. He just, he sent us a deed, but we didn't accept the deed, okay? So, you know, kind of going back to the idea that maybe this roadway was constructed on some of these people's lots. Yes, they can waive their right to damages, but in addition to that, if they have a mortgage, we're gonna need their mortgage company to waive its right to damages, because the mortgage company owns the lot jointly with whoever lives there. So there's, there's lots of title work to do here. If the, you know, going back to, again, if the as-built doesn't line up with the subdivision plan.
This was recorded, this road was recorded.
I assume so.
Yeah, it just run, they, they, you know, page sixty, six forty-five, plan eight-two. But it's a plan, right? Isn't that different than a
Well, that's what you approved, and as part of your approval, I suspect you said to the developer, put some money, you know, give us some money to hold, that would, you know, that, that kind of will help us get the road completed if you leave, but in the meantime, we're gonna allow you to sell lots, because we know it's expensive to build a road, and you can't really be expected to construct this whole road without making any profit, so we'll let you sell lots as you construct the road.
Well, I, so I would recommend then, so obviously, we really can't do anything till we know if the as-built is
Seems like the easiest way to move ahead is to
Right, because if that, if there's no problem there, now, how that happens, based upon Deb's letter, how that happens, I'm not sure, because it looks like the title work, well, title of the work, deed work, or whatever needs to be done, when you don't have any information from the bill, the builder, it sounds like it's not really something that's easily done. Normally, I recommend town acquire, require the developer to provide necessary title information and plans, but it appears it's not possible in this case. If the town is interested in perfecting the layout of the road, the cost associated with such layout will be borne to the town. So I don't know, is that, so I guess I'll ask Tom again, the necessary title information and plans, where would those be if we don't have them?
Well, they don't, so I, I think the problem is that they don't quite exist yet. Because, so again, we lay the, we lay the as-built over the subdivision plan, we see that it's off by six feet, so the lot, lot seventeen, there's a little triangle that's twenty-two feet long and six feet, you know, at, at its wide point, you know, tapering down to zero. So someone's gonna need to convey us that triangle of land, right? And whoever owns it is gonna have to sign something, either that allows us to take it, or that it is, is in a deed form that conveys it to us. And their mortgage company needs to approve of that.
But that's only if, that would only be if the as-built plan is different from
If it lines up, right, if it lines up beautifully, if they line up beautifully, this, this is much easier, then we just, then we are acquiring land, and we don't need to, it's like a, we're acquiring land from a single owner, the developer, we don't need to go to each landowner.
So how do we get the title and necessary information and plans to do that review? Because it sounds like
So reverse those things, right? It's, so it's not title information and plans, it's plans first, and then the title information flows from there. So we need to understand how the, how the road was constructed in relation to the subdivision plan, and if it lines up beautifully, great.
Simple is just overlaying something like literally?
So they gotta go out there and survey the whole thing, and they'll come back with a Mylar, you'll put on top of this, and then we're gonna see how
We're gonna have to like go out, someone's gonna go out and survey the whole, the whole area?
Yeah, I mean, I would start with a call to the engineer that created the as-built plan. And ask him if he can, you know, you, you know, if he can tell us the difference between the as-built plan and the subdivision plan. Because he had to be using the subdivision plan when he created the as-built plan.
Do we have a copy of the subdivision?
All we have is the as-built, we don't have the subdivision plan, all we have is the as-built.
So the subdivision plan is recorded at the registry, so worst-case scenario, we can get it there.
Okay, we have searched for documents, we've come up with things every once in a while, buildings have moved three times. We've had floods, we've had molds, we've had lots of things happen, we've been through the boxes and cellar. So, every once in a while, we find something.
So I'm just, I'm just super curious, if we don't even know if the road was built to specs, we don't even know if our lots are built to specs, how are you assessing our taxes that we pay the town if we don't even know what we own for property?
Just go for the payment, see how you make up.
No, what I'm saying, we're paying taxes now.
I mean, that's Registry under the subdivision plan.
That's what you're being taxed on.
Again, that's within, you know, it's not gonna be like a foot or two here, you know, that's, and that's what we're talking, you know, it's could be six inches to
It could be perfect, maybe that's what we should be hoping for, because all Deb said is that she doesn't have the information to do it, she didn't say that anything she didn't, there's nothing in here that says anything is wrong, it just says, I don't have the information to do what I need to do.
So, Tom, the subdivision plan is at the registry, you said?
So as, so we have, and just, so we would need to, to be comfortable, you need to send us back to the selectmen to figure who's going to pay for this.
Right, exactly, that's what we need to do, send it back to them, uh, with our recommendations. We maybe plan to do that, as we're going to hash this over and over.
What, what if we, what if we were to get a copy from the register of the subdivision plan? To see if something's really glaring to begin.
Well, it still needs to be done accurately by a, by an engineer.
What about the road description? I mean, it has all the pins, it has all the
Yeah, that's what I said, so for me, so that's what I said, for me, for me, we, we as a town decided not to do peer review. We did, we made, this town made a conscious decision in two thousand and five, not to peer review because of money. And these people here don't have a road because of it. I would send this to the town, I personally would send this to the town.
If you're, if you're gonna go back and rebuild the road, though, you're gonna have to do a survey.
We're not gonna go back and rebuild the road.
You're gonna build it as is on possibly somebody's property.
The roads are already built.
It is, yes, but we don't
So do you think that if we come back and we say, oh my god, this road is, is not in the right spot, we're gonna start
So we have to take care of the property issue.
If we didn't do peer review, the property issue would disappear, I'm sorry, I, I think, I think as, I think where will
We need to lead this up to the town voters, it's up to them.
Well
It's time to move forward, the road's been there for thirty years, people have bought, sold, built on property that wasn't supposed to be built on, and it's all good. Lawyer that protects the town, I get that, but there's a lot of what-ifs. If it hasn't happened in thirty years, as one gentleman said, why, what's the next thirty years? Like, it's really up to the town vote.
You need to get the road fixed.
No, but the road being fixed isn't, that's like, when the town has the money, they'll fix it. You think they're gonna fix that road, Dennis?
This is number one.
I have, I have, well, I have very strong opinions about that, who's responsible for fixing that road. All paid taxes. Well, I'm just saying, so I don't know if I would be having a discussion with these people about how much they make to fix their road. That's just my
Why we refer back to this
That's why we always just, you bet it's not getting done, so let's figure a way to fix it.
I make a motion that will return this to the selectmen with the recommendations that we discussed tonight.
What's the recommendation?
I'll come in here tonight. But they were the ones that sent it to us to resolve.
But we could resolve this.
Well, I think a couple of Correcting what might be potential errors.
We made a decision, the town made a decision in two thousand and five, not to have a peer review. So we just Why are we changing the town's What?
We're just reinforcing a mistake that was made at that.
Okay, well, what about the mistakes that I made, ones that I sent to peer review, I don't want to.
How you particularly want, uh, it'll be all changed.
I think.
We don't know, that's an issue.
They've been there for this long, and what they're requesting from us is that they're not as concerned about that as they are with the fact that they still. That it's not being.
I just want to go back to Tom one more time.
That's it.
Is there anything?
In a nutshell.
Right, Tom, is there anything?
All this time.
I get it.
Tom, and the, the reason why peer review was not done is the peer review did not have the information that was necessary to do it. Is that what this document says?
I don't know what that document says, I don't have that document.
Do you have it in front of you now? Well, I can only, I mean, I can read it, it tells me that. In order to do what she feels is proper peer review, she needs to have this information and the guy's gone. Well, today, we have a description of the road and as-built plan in several letters from the board and the selectmen sending this to town floor. And I don't know why we don't make a motion to send it to town floor. Like, I don't know why we're trying to, why we as a board have any issue with this going to town floor, and it's not, to be perfectly frank, as long as we have enough information to convey that road to the town, which I think, according to what is here, Tom will be the final decider of that. It's here.
With that description of the road, we have enough information to convey that to the town, Tom?
So again, we may have enough information in the description of the as-built to have the town accept the road. But the unknown there is, who is conveying it to us? Is it just the developer? Is it someone standing in the shoes of the developer? Or is it various abutters to the road who, you know, the road encroaches on them? So, you know, there, it, there takes two parties, someone needs to convey it, someone needs to receive it. I think we have problems with who the conveyor is.
I think we have documentation, I think. And again, I'm not. I know, I'm sorry, somewhere in here, there's documentation that the builder conveys that property to the town of Templeton. And so it's, we already own it, well, I'm sorry, we don't own it.
Yep, so again, he, he gave us a deed, but we didn't accept the deed. And so then, is the deed, is the deed keyed to the as-built plan or to the underlying subdivision plan?
I think, uh, the questions already been answered, there was a mistake made. Because way back then, when we okayed it and the selectmen okayed it, and then when they went out to survey it for the overlay, then it, they found out that some of the land was on, on the road, some of the road, not somebody's land.
That's not what this says, Frank. That's right, where is the documentation to that, Frank? That's what I'm trying to say.
I can finish, you might get your answer. I mean, when you open your mouth, I don't interrupt. I like to have the same courtesy. Is that fair? Try to help you people, seems like. The thing is, so that tells us that, like, we're wondering, maybe there's no problem. Okay, that started the problem, it opened our eyes that something wasn't right. So now we know there is something wrong. What, then, but the people involved, and I don't know who they were, don't care, didn't want to swap their land for a road to make the road the right place. So then that's what turned it sour, because the people there, whoever they were, didn't want to do it. I mean, they had the right, it was their land, but they didn't want to make the deal, so.
Right, so, but I, so for me, not being around, and if you weren't here, right, let me say, you weren't here.
I can leave.
No, Frank, that's not what I mean. I'm just saying that, um, I don't see that this, that there was a. Well, usually, if there's a problem or something, you would have, in the, all I see here is, we had, we had a peer reviewer go out to do it. Peer review said, I can't get, and the town's not willing to pay the necessary ti- title stuff to get to do peer review. And therefore, the board at the time said, well, if the town's not willing to pay it, let's send it to the floor, and then it never went.
We're just rehashing the same station over again.
Well, because I, because I.
We need to do something to send it back to the selectmen.
Second.
Motion and second, in discussion of the motion.
I, I just want to clarify, can we sum up what we will send them? Recommendations, so.
What's the recommendation, sir?
Well, that we have, uh, first, we have to decide what to do about getting a peer review. I think we've already decided. We're gonna, we're gonna make, the board has to make a decision on the peer review, that's not, but I asked for money, but we're gonna make up our mind tonight or some other night that we're gonna acquire. That's why we're here for, to try and get.
What makes us, what gives us the right to override? What gives us the right to override a decision that the board made in two thousand and five? I just, I am so confused by this, the board made a decision, the board, not just this board, the selectman and town coordinator made a decision not to, not to send stuff to peer review because they didn't want to pay for it. But it never went to town meeting, but it should have went, it should have went. Didn't because, because the town didn't have any money.
Or to strain it out at that time.
So these people paid taxes all these years, town should have used some of that money. Uh, all right.
How about all the ramifications are gonna happen?
More ramifications, it's been there since two thousand and five, they've sold and bought houses and that property, and no one has seen a thing.
Some people have been there since ninety-three. Eighty-nine.
So let me, so I, so let me re-ask, Tom, let me, to, to, Tom, is there any, there, are there any damages that the town could incur based upon us sending this to town floor and it being approved?
Yeah. So there's two things, right? So if we, if we acquire the prop, well, first of all, excuse me. We need to decide how we're going to acquire the property. Are they going to deed it to us? Or are we going to take it by eminent domain?
And I ask my question differently, the town, I'm going to say the town already owns the property, we haven't accepted the ownership yet. So the residents in this room would have nothing to do with us accepting this road. If we accept this road and the town, and the land is ours already, which I believe according to something I read somewhere, it is, would we have any damages as far as like future damages? Personally, on the board, as individual.
First of all, I, I don't think the town has acquired this land, because if they had, we wouldn't be having this conversation. But using your example that we have acquired the land, we then move to the second phase, right? We, once the town accepts the road as public, we are responsible for maintaining it.
Correct.
And if it is unmaintained, and someone is injured, or property is injured, or a car is injured, we're liable for that. So, you know, the kind of the, the second part of the advice is, you want to make sure the title is correct when you acquire the land. Once you acquire it, you want to make sure that the condition of the roadway is acceptable and in good condition, or that you're prepared to fix it. The bad situation is, is acquiring a roadway that's in poor condition.
So is there? So I, I have a follow-up, I guess my follow-up question is, is there a, I mean, we, we accepted the road, well. We never accepted it, but.
We did it.
We did it, right, no, I know, so now, so the town's liability at this point would be accepting a road. If somebody the next day went through and, you know, popped a tire, busted a rim, or broke a neck, that could be, okay. That's probably no different than the liability we have in every road in the town of Templeton except Route Two A.
Well, so there's, right, so there's, there's private ways and public ways. This isn't the only private way, but, so we have that liability on public ways, but not on private ways.
I'm okay with that.
All right.
I drive down Auto River Road, it's not that great.
There are worse.
Or Bondsworth Road. Right, I know, I've been up all these roads.
So send us back to the selectmen with a recommendation that we get a peer review, which might also involve a, a survey, would the town accept responsibilities for paying for that?
I know, but I don't even know if I want the town to pay thousands of dollars for something that makes not a bit of difference in the world.
It seems like.
Because it makes you feel good.
We own some responsibility of this process, but. Well, the other issue, which he just made, that it's gonna be in good condition.
Oh, I don't care.
That's another big.
That's every room. As of right now, I've got a motion on the floor, I have a second on the floor. Any discussion on this motion?
I think we're just trying to, um, formulate what recommendation we want to send to the town floor, correct?
Right. And they would have to put on.
So is your motion to have the selectman clean this up as it's going to town floor or to? Well, it just bounces back and forth.
It'll be their decision whether or not to put it on the war. I'll take yours.
I was gonna, I was gonna say, can we put a timeline on this? They actually can't put it on, they actually can't put it on the war, only we can.
Yeah, if you guys approve, to move forward tonight, it can go to town for.
I would do it.
Why can't you?
We.
Why can't you? I mean, you could recuse yourself, Frank, because you originally signed. Because you signed off on it in two thousand and five.
Okay, so you have of your, section two forty dash seven of your bylaws, which is called conditions of acceptance. So it says that no private street shall be accepted by town meeting as a public way unless all the following conditions have met. The first is that the way shall have a minimum pavement width of not less than twenty-four feet for its entire length. The way shall be shown on a definitive plan endorsed by the planning board and shall be actually constructed in accordance with the specifications of the definitive plan approval, which means the as-built lines up with the definitive. And three, the way shall have been completed in accordance with said definitive plan for a period of at least twelve months in order to ensure that the way may withstand severe winter weather. Okay, then twenty-four dash, or two forty dash eight says, notwithstanding town, you know, despite all those things, town meeting may accept a public way if the planning board agrees to waive the conditions. So I, I think the question before you is, I'm not sure you have the answers to A, B, and C. And maybe you want to get the answers to A, B, and C before you decide to waive them.
I think we have the.
You have the answers to A.
I have the answers to A, B, and C.
So answer B for me.
What, what was B?
Was the way constructed? In accordance with the specifications of the definitive plan approval?
From what we have in front of us, I would have to say yes, without, with, without being able to do peer review. I would have to say yes, and I can't do peer review because the town can't afford it, and they put it in writing back in two thousand and five.
Tom, my petition was, started, our petition, pardon me, started with the select board, they were all for it. And they moved it to the planning board. And what I, what we petitioned to the planning board was waive their, the waived.
To waive it.
To waive the conditions of acceptance as that bylaw, the very last piece that you read. If this board says yes to that, then it goes to town for them to do the final. And so we move forward, we move forward.
But I, but I, but respectfully, respectfully, I still need to answer the question for town meeting because I'm going to be in charge of making sure that we properly acquire the title to the roadway and record it so that it's actually ours, because that's my job. And I don't, I, I cannot, as we sit here today, answer the question, how are we going to acquire it? Is it in a deed, or is it a taking? And whatever the answer is to that question, who is signing the deed? Is it you? Is it a developer? Who's signing it? Because someone needs to convey it to us, and I know we've got a deed that's been sitting there for eighteen years. And I can tell you, the registry of deeds is not going to accept an eighteen-year-old deed, so we're gonna have to figure that one out too.
It was already, it was already registered.
It was recorded?
It says that this, 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 this road was recorded plan six forty-five, plan eighty-two, page six forty-five, no, plan book six forty-five, page eighty-two.
That's the subdivision, that's just what you designed, is, does that say, you know, I hereby convey? roadway show, yeah, so then that's not a deed to us.
I think we do have that somewhere.
Maybe Lori could send it to me, uh, you know, take a look at it tomorrow.
Do you have that document that Conrad signed, signed it?
I do, I have it right here.
Why can't I see it? Why can't I find it? Templeton Board, see memorandum of understanding, Templeton Planning Board, Conrad Donald, Templeton Planning Board, Hereafter Board, and Conrad Danelle, Hereafter Danelle, have agreed to the following terms and conditions concerning subdivision entitled Laura's subdivision, the town of Templeton shall retain the remaining funds in escrow for the completion of the Laurel subdivision, the escrow fund shall be used to have the road surveyed and pay for the preparation as the as-built plan. The escrow fund shall be used for any legal or engineering services required to finalize the subdivision project. Uh, two thousand five hundred dollars shall be placed in escrow for future maintenance. All remaining funds in escrow shall be used for final repairs of the road. Once the road, uh, has been built according to the specifications in the as-built plan, we, we've been approved by the planning board, and the planning board shall request that the Templeton Board of Selectmen places on the town warrant and the articles of the roads contained in Laura's subdivision would be accepted away. That's all it does, it does not say I hereby convey anything.
That's just an agreement about.
I agree.
Use funds that.
Random understanding, that's all it is.
So who owns the land right now?
Uh, I would say it's owner unknown, unless the developer still exists and is hanging around, I would say it's probably owner unknown.
We could probably get him to sign it over.
Oh, there you go, that's useful.
We probably could.
Okay, so Tom, based upon him signing over the road.
Yeah.
And the town being too cheap to pay for peer, peer review back in two thousand and five.
Yeah.
Um, and everybody else already approving it back in two thousand and five. The board can, on its own free will, exercise its right to send this to town floor based upon the fourth paragraph that you read.
Yes, you can vote to waive those conditions, but I still submit, you don't know the answer to B. You don't know whether this road was constructed in the same location that it was designed, and we.
I can, but wait a minute, wait a minute, it doesn't matter according to what they're requesting of us. They're requesting that we waive A, B, and C.
Yeah.
On that bylaw. And this thing said, yeah, we'll do it, go to the planning board. Okay, my answer is easy, but whatever, I mean, you got, you have a motion.
To suggest that we bring the motion on the floor to a vote.
Are we waiving all of A, B, and C?
No, no, he wants to.
All right, the motion that we return this to the selectmen with a recommendation that we get a peer review engineer to determine the location of the road, which may also require the use of surveying, will the town cover some of the costs of that doing it?
Not some of the costs.
The whole cost.
Okay, and you were still in the question and answer.
We all over talked in ten thousand, twenty thousand.
Or more.
Or more.
Right, and so, and I, so just for further discussions, you know, one of the things I, this, as an individual member, one of the things I remember, I worry about is setting a precedent, you know, for the town and not, you know, exercising that section of the bylaw. But I can't think, there's lots of private ways, there's lots of places, but there aren't too many subdivisions in this town that meet the same criteria.
There are quite a few.
Can't connect some of those Evan Circle ones, these are, these are, this is a road that was approved by the board and by the. Can't come on like some of those Evan circle ones, these are, these are, this is a road that was approved by the board and by the selectmen. This is not, there's many places that have not been approved, many things that have not gone this far. But there aren't many, unless someone can tell me that there, are we gonna get influx of people asking?
Well, I think we should. We should handle each case on its own merits.
Right.
I don't wanna connect this case with Anderson Drive.
So.
Whatever, they gonna.
Okay.
They got a problem, it's up to them to come to us, cuz every problem is not gonna be the same.
But this is, this is bounced between our board and the select board how many times now?
So.
So if we send it to the. We send it to the select board, what are they gonna do? You know, they just sent it to us, right?
They already said, okay.
Our petition to the planning board, our exact petition was for you to vote yes for the waiver of condition.
So Tom, can I ask one more question, please? Sorry. Does us exercising our right as a board to waive those conditions? Set us up for anything in the future where we would. Have to waive those conditions?
No, I'm, I I I will tell you honestly, I always recommend boards never. You know, never really worry about precedent if you're making a good decision. So you can, you know, every situation is different. If you are analyzing this decision and making the best decision you can. I don't worry about that it's gonna lock you into something in the future.
So I would ask Dennis to change or modify his. His nomination to. With with the with the exception that we need to figure out who wants the land. But once that is ice fixed and conveyed properly to us. That we waive A, B, and C and we send this to town floor. And I don't know why we're gonna spend thousands of dollars on lawyers. Because let's face it, these people.
How would you get those answers?
If you don't survey it.
The town decided it didn't want the answers.
Having a peer review to make comparison of the original plan and the.
So you're saying the engineer who built this name, you he didn't do his job right?
No, I know.
Back then, the decision was made that nobody was concerned about that. Why would we continue to bounce this back and forth?
I would like to make, I would like to, I would like to end this, I would like.
So you're just gonna perpetuate whatever exists.
It's been that way since two thousand and five. Whatever, I'm sorry, I mean, I.
I I can't help but imagine some of these people are running into problems if they.
I don't, I think this is a, I think. I think this is a problem that's not a problem. I think we made this a problem. So, that's just my opinion, I'm sorry, I I'm only one. So your motion is to send it back to the. With.
Letting them know that we need to get a peer review engineer to determine.
It was surprising to say, yeah.
Right. Taxes in town, over twenty thousand dollars, yeah, like some, you know, I don't want my taxes to be spent on peer reviewing something that doesn't make a difference in the world.
To you it doesn't.
These people are made. Well, if you.
We're in front of you today, we're asking you to waive those conditions so we can move forward.
The only thing that concerns me is the part that Tom said about someone the day after we approved this. But I mean, that could happen on any road, I guess, in town.
Thirteen Laurelview Road, I bought a lot from the town of Templeton recently. Was any any title checks, was anything done on that to make sure it's? It is clean? Then it's not on town, town.
Did your property? Did your bank require that before you?
Pay cash, pay cash.
I'm just asking, we're just saying, you know, what's what?
I think, see, you know, so funny, I, again, only one person. And we'll, we'll end this. See, I I I think my vote is. For their benefit. I I think, you know, the values of their properties in a private world have suffered. I think there's lots of things that have happened to these people. And I understand when people did it way back when. You know, maybe they didn't know, but we know that this this road was sent. Was was approved by both boards several times that we wanted to do peer review, the town, the town of Templeton said, no. Not just. Not just the board, the town coordinator. As I discussed, discussed with the town coordinator, it is not accurate, it is not possible to accurately predict the cost. It is determined, they're not gonna do it.
So. In perfect world, I would love to see everything line up great, but again, I think this is gonna potentially drag it out for. Who knows how long, for how many thousands and thousands of dollars? I I also. So I think at this point, I I would also like to send it to town floor and let the, you know, town people in total. Again, we've we've hashed this, we've kicked it around and yes, this is long, long overdue, that should have been all these surveys done and everything. Correct.
People should have gave that.
And again, I, I know, could something pop up? Absolutely. I mean, several, you know, lots have been sold and nothing's.
It's not a very clean way to do this, though.
I I agree, but. But there's a reason for that provision to be in that bylaw because of situations like this, cuz this is just a. Just a cluster, you know what, just way back when. So. That's why that's there and I, and I though I agree with Tom a hundred percent, we need to figure out who wants to land and if Conrad lives in Goddner. We'll call him and figure it out and straighten it out, but as long as that is something that is we're able to do, I don't see any reason that we should not. Send this to town for and, you know, the condition of the road was probably just fine in two thousand and five, I hope so, because. And just because the town and the town plowed it till two thousand eighteen. So by way of using that road and plowing it till two thousand eighteen, you didn't fix it between two thousand five and two thousand eighteen. I mean, I don't know, this is just a mess and I think that the people here deserve a tiny bit of.
Yeah.
I I just don't understand like why we just keep wanting to send back to the selection to say, oh, we'd be towns get so much money.
In my case, I. I'm trying to do the best for both sides.
I agree.
But the thing is, you don't can't have your kid needed to. So. How you looking at down the road, somebody's gonna get hurt, not us. I mean, because of the, you know, you know, your buildings on the town road, town may never accept. The road. Soon as they find out there's a, a building, garage or something like it.
Down here, I don't want listening names for sale, not that long ago, I sold it, I don't have it. But someone said it was, someone, I, the septic of that house was built on someone else's property, right? It happens, I fixed it. The house didn't blow up.
I just wouldn't feel comfortable. And I know there's a liability, big liability, especially what happens if you hold the law in here. Somebody's driving their car and they kill in his on that spot. Now he got killed, I'm not going to the extreme, he got killed in your line, not the down road.
No, no, I know. No, but lots of things can happen, my only point.
We can do it the right way too, or each just get a service.
Who's gonna, so are.
You really have to do this the right way this time, it's not been correct for however many years, eighteen or so.
I'm not sure what's, let's.
Let's. Let's get started and do it the right way.
Let's play it out, let's play it out, it's survey, it doesn't match, right? Now what?
Then, then like.
But we don't, but we don't have any reason to take that next step.
You got four more very expensive things that you were willing to overlook. Condition of the road or different things, so we could overlook a lot of those. I mean, if we had all those conditions, you know, you don't, we don't expect. So we're getting at, give some things, someone do stop right. I mean, you can't. I don't think the lawyer will let us build a road on somebody's block.
There's no reason.
Accepting a road.
There's no reason for us to believe, there is no reason unless someone can point it to me. That I see anywhere that this as-built is any different than the. We don't know why that's, because the town said we don't wanna spend the money to do it.
Was that a wise decision then?
Carl Boucher, if, ask him how many lots is involved, might tell you.
Okay, well, we can, we can put Dennis's motion to a test of the night while.
What you repeat that, it was so long ago, I forgot.
I made a motion to refer this back to the selectmen with some recommendations that we get a peer review. And it might also involve the need for a survey to complete that. And will they cover the cost?
So motions are made. We have a second on it, um, I think we've discussed it enough, so, um, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? So, I make a motion that based upon. Everything being okay. Tom, can you help me with this motion? Cuz I don't really know how to word it with the land. But I wanna make a motion.
Conditions of acceptance.
That that we waive the conditions of acceptance and let the town people vote on this road. But obviously, there needs to be a condition in there that the property, the property is conveyed appropriately, so I don't know how to word that.
So how about? That you move to waive the requirements of section. Two forty dash seven on the condition that. I'm just trying this out, that a a satisfactory title is presented to the town.
So move, that's my motion for the minutes. Do I have any discussion on this current motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? So, talk to Conrad and we'll figure it out.
I I will work with Conrad to figure out exactly what I need to do. Something will have to be written up.
Yeah, and I don't wanna mislead anyone, we need to, you know, there's a lot of title work to do here to make sure that.
We're gonna do it right, there's no reason to keep going back, but. That's why I would say clean title.
But this needs to kind of.
So when, when would the towns vote on it?
Well.
That's what we need to be certain that we can get a clear title. It appears to be it's gonna be the developer.
There's still more to take working process to go, this is just hopefully going to be pushing it a little bit faster.
Cause the town don't take it.
There's a town, don't take it, then. Exactly, you have to start over.
I I would think our goal would be fall town meeting.
Yeah. It won't take then, no.
No, that's all right, no, I'm just saying because it was in October when we went to the select board and it's taken us this long now.
Select board know that we.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, what?
They'll know by the minutes. Based upon that motion that Tom elegantly described. Folks, thank you very much.
Permission to exit the Zoom?
Yes, yes, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, nice to work with you all.